All right, it is a little bit past seven o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order. Karen, could you note roll call, please?
Sure.
And I'd invite everyone to please join and rise and join us from the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we are in workshop format tonight, so we are in a more informal setting. We do have an agenda before you. We do have one item to add to the agenda. We would like to add a new number six, tuck in right ahead of the 2020 budget update, a fairly quick update on the Castlewood Gulf contract. We do have open forum scheduled this evening. Is there, I'm assuming nobody's signed up for open forum?
Nobody.
Safe assumption. All right, we will move on to Hardwood Creek WMA project discussion. Ryan, you're leading us through this.
Mayor, City Council, this is just a topic that's kind of been brewing, started within the watershed district. Board member Waller approached me and asked if the city had any comments related to the ongoing situation with this property. Basically, my understanding is that the DNR is looking to purchase additional land from a private property owner and expand their management, wildlife management area, which will then obviously corporate more hunting and land preservation. But then, board member Waller's concern was because of the amount of drain tile in this area that hasn't been maintained or preserved, that if nothing is kind of tied with all that stuff that's in works there, that, you know, over time, that becomes worse. And then the area that is upland, potential, I mean, long-term, long-term development area that is compromised because of the land use change here and not being able to restore those pipes. So probably the best thing is to do is first is kind of go through our packet together. As I'm just kind of getting pieces of info from people and playing third person on this one. So, and I just felt that it was something you guys should be aware of. If the city should be providing comment or not, as we're getting a lot of pressure from the watershed to do so. The administrator at the watershed didn't really have much to say, other than we're willing to work with the partners of this situation. I did provide on your additional, two additional handouts. One is from County Commissioner Fran Miron that, you know, talks about they're trying to coordinate a meeting with staff of the DNR, the watershed district, and the city staff in the county. I have not been knowledgeable about any of those meetings trying to be, I guess, scheduled. But in the letter, it states, and then also I just quickly printed off what parcels we're talking about, because in all the other stuff, unless you really zero in, you don't, you don't know where they're at. But there's a little development we did back, I would say, in probably 2007 Stony River, Stony River Preserve, I think it was, at the south end of Jeffrey Avenue. And if you kind of drive down that road, south of County Road 50, you'll find a kind of gravel parking lots, and then you can walk into this preserve area, which is already in DNR land. On the sheet that I handed with the red Xs, that's the area that the DNR is looking to add to the area. And you can briefly see a 45 on the one parcel. So that parcel, I believe, is about 74 acres. They're only purchasing 45 of that. But the acquisition, property acquisition does go all the way to the west, which butts up to Imperial Avenue, which is a residential subdivision, and has gone through the gravel road assessment process before about should we pave or not? And then we see assessments, and it kind of comes and goes every several years. So that just gives you a perspective of what we're talking about, the land. So in your packet, if you kind of just scroll through first couple pages, give some background on what really is being talked about here on some of these acquisitions. And there was a map in there, but it doesn't really specifically highlight the areas of the land, other than the diagram I gave you, but to interact kind of where we're talking here. On the fifth page, I inserted what we have for mapping on the judicial ditches within the city. Now, this is kind of where we're getting the bolts of things, and why the watershed had some concerns from board member Waller. So the green ditch is JD2, and that kind of bounces up and out of our southern border. But coming from the north, the red ditch, JD5, that's gonna, that's gonna be direct conversation here. And then the part that goes straight north and south out of the green, is anybody colorblind? I always have to ask.
That is a great question.
No? Okay. So everyone can see the green and the red. So as you go straight north on the red, before jet starts heading northwest or to the left there, that little corner is what we're gonna, from there down to the green is what we'll talk about. But from that corner there and up to the orange, there's a private drain tile, too, that has preserved what is in, is there today. Obviously, the maintenance of the red is the concern, because that goes all the way back in north and potentially affects the intersection of Harrow Avenue and 202nd, which we know is prime development sometime, if this, the red is not currently maintained. So with that, and you know, with this stuff going on, then on the next slide, you can see that straight north and south shot, the slides turn sideways here. So the tile outlet coming down into JD2 where the green is the big red and black circle, and the drain tile is headed north, and then the yellow dots are investigation points, so kind of like cleanout points that were there. And then we're headed north, and you can see, when you really just kind of read and dive into all these things, what was wrong with the pipe. Those are just subnotes on the side. But it was basically so bad, I'll get to that on the next slide. But then that yellow line is that private line that I talked about that extends from that red JD5 up to the orange. But that JD5 ditch was so bad, you can see there after they scraped off some of the topsoil, what that pipe looked like laying there. Well, joints are all separated, heaved, are offsets, cracked, obviously a lot of soil in the pipe. And this is, again, just a private area. So the watershed started doing some investigation, and then it got to a point, you know, they saw that the pipe was nearly plugged in majority of the areas and offsets. So this is work that was done here in October. And that pipe that was, or that tile that was there once is now offlane to the side as they excavate it out. And when you get to slide 15, you can see it's been left as an open channel flow right now, until I believe they've been trying to work through a resolution on how to maintain drainage there. So to date, I haven't provided any comments on this. This, you know, we wanted to have this at the workshop that was canceled, to get some direction where we should go. I believe there was a meeting today at the land, at the land committee met today. What evolved out of that, I have no idea. But you got the letter from the commissioner here, Fran Miron, on they're trying to coordinate anything. Dave, have you received anything?
I have not.
Nothing?
Nope.
So maybe it's late to the game, but I just wanted you guys to be aware of this, as you can see all the significant work that has occurred on JD5 to date, and basically within a month by the watershed. And if you go back to slide five, you know, that red line, and if you really follow that and see how far north and west it goes, what that potentially, if that's not preserved, what that's going to affect up in that area. Now, the orange JD6 does eventually drain to the north into Forest Lake, while all that red GD stuff drains south, which basically works its way to the Mississippi, after it goes through the whole southwest portion of the city, too, you know? So not anything little, even though it's the dead end of a branch, but you can see what upland it does touch and stuff, so. Dan, do you have anything to add on this, or am I online?
That summarizes pretty close to date. Washington County had reached out, like you said, about the meeting, but it has not been set yet. There has not been, dates are still being determined, and content of the meeting, too, has been kind of deferred back between the watershed, because they were the ones that had a lot of the comments initially on it. So nothing definitive as of this afternoon.
It just might become a political decision, so I just felt that you have the information now. Where we go with it, I don't know. It's obviously a great use for conservation down here and wildlife, and expansion of that obviously helps a private property owner probably make some money on a land sale, which, pretty low land, but as you work westward, or if the drainage isn't preserved, and if there's a desire to increase levels of water to attract habitat, those are all the questions I don't know. Do they continue to have easement rights or access to maintain the JD? You know, that's all the things I think what the concern was, was from Waller, if the sale happens, and all that other stuff, so.
So I could use some process clarification. So if this becomes a wetland manager, a wildlife management area, does it become, does it come out of jurisdiction and active management of the watershed district? And so is this kind of an either/or type decision, or is there an opportunity for continued partnership?
I would hope that if the meeting could be coordinated, that'd be one of the topics discussed. It's very important to maintain, my opinion.
Right. And the, the creation of the wildlife management area, how does that happen? Is this a, is this a private transaction between the DNR and property owners? What is the, I'm trying to, and I guess more specifically, what's the city's role in that creation?
I just want, I don't know what our role really is, or how we want to go about this, because I'm just finding information out, obviously after the fact, and just trying to get it in front of you, because I believe this could eventually be a political decision if there's asked some direction on where we want to go with this, because whatever we do, it potentially harms a land sale, you know, private property owner. Then my understanding, you got pheasants forever involved, you got the DNR involved, you got a conservation area involved, and once it becomes conservation, it's not going back. What adjacent properties have been engaged in this process? If you're expanding a wildlife area, you wouldn't think hunting is going to be a major thing. Does that then mean the backdoors of some of these single-family homes?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I just don't know, so. And nobody from the DNR spoke to me.
So we haven't been formally invited to comment?
No.
It's, okay. So any involvement at this point, or any comment would be kind of, would, would it be us inserting ourselves into the process? Is that?
If that's, if that's a request you guys would want us to pursue, I mean, obviously we would, seems like Fran Miron has some involvement to date, that we would
Right.
Probably send an email tomorrow. You know, we talked about this at a workshop. There's not a lot of information that's known. Might be best if somehow you guys could package something to get us all on the same route, so we're all on the same page. And what decisions are you expecting the city to comment on?
Right. All right.
I could just provide just a little bit more background to that question. The DNR reached out, maybe a couple months ago, just kind of said, from a high level, do you have any, you know, they kind of said they're looking at purchasing this property, convert it to WMA. They said from the city's side, is there any issues with that project? Not outside of this kind of this drainage issue that was in there. So we looked at it from the land use side, and we didn't see any known conflict between taking this land and putting it into WMA, because it did kind of meet with the long-term vision for that particular region. Then after that comment was made, that's when just kind of this ditch issue came up. So then I responded back with, watershed called out and said, you know, where's, we have some comments on the ditch side of it. So the DNR at that point, I said, you know, it was more on the watershed side with the ditch, because we looked at it just strictly from a land use side of it. So that's kind of where our involvement has been to date.
And when you say land use, are you meaning like from a zoning perspective, that it's not in conflict with future zoning plans?
Correct, yeah. It wasn't like they're trying to put this in the middle of a commercial district, for example.
Right.
So that's with the lens that we kind of looked at it through and said, yeah, it looks to match up. And I did say we didn't have any foreseeable issues with it, but then that's when, that kind of predicated all of this sort of
Right.
judicial ditch issues that were brought to our attention.
What is, what is the metropolitan urbanizing area?
Urbanization area? The musa boundary?
Yeah. On slide, what is it, slide three? Where it shows the WMA, the outline, and then it's, it's overlaid onto something called the metropolitan urbanizing area.
It's on page three?
Yeah, well, the third page of the packet.
Page four on the?
PDF.
PDF.
It's the DNR slide two, three. Yeah, the DNR.
So what was the question, or what do you, what color are you looking at?
The black. What's the metropolitan urbanizing area?
What is that? This slide, Ryan?
On page four of our packet.
What is that outline?
I don't know, other than it's got to be related to something of the conservation side of things, because it's not, I thought you were first referring to what we call as the musa boundary. And that would be basically the majority of the city where the development's going to occur over the next
Right.
30 years. And that's what Met Council has allowed for, a certain density to be built within, but that area is
That's all swamped.
still out of it. Because you're, that whole area is east of Harrow and south of County Road 50.
That's the old swamp that we knew when we were kids. It's been, it's a huge area.
But that term metropolitan, metropolitan urbanizing area
Yeah.
isn't a term that you frequently use, or isn't?
And it's confusing.
It's not a city term.
I just wonder if that's a, a general legend they have, because I don't see how it correlates with anything above, unless, I see a state water management area that's circled in green, and then the red, which is the Hardwood Creek underscore 4A to 4F. And then you got that darker one, which I don't see with, even in the legend.
Right.
So I think some of those in the legend are just a generic legend they must have from pages. So this came from a handful of papers from board member Waller.
Okay.
Was there more content to it? I don't know.
A quick, take this for what it's worth, but a quick Google search just has the seven county metropolitan area frequently referred to as the DNR metropolitan urbanizing area. Not something, which is a more generic term for the region, not specifically that area in Forest Lake.
So here's a, so I support Commissioner Miron's request for some collaboration and request for a meeting. This is a classic area where different, each party's going to have their own perspective and their own lens, and while we might look at, you know, so the first question comes in as a land use question, and, you know, this is not in conflict with current zoning plans, and so there's that lens. And then there's the, the lens of watershed district, and what does that mean for downstream water management? And I, I think that's an important lens that we need to look at. And then there's overall conservation, and that's an important lens. And then the lens of, you know, the wishes of the private homeowner, or private party that is considering the transaction. So sitting here today without all of that, those perspectives, it's hard to give guidance other than I would support a collaborative approach, and whatever we can do to, as, as a city body, to learn more of those perspectives, to help inform a decision, I think would be important. To say, you know, where I would, you know, I'm not sure there's a decision to come before council and to, to take an opinion on what that decision might be. It feels a little early, but I do think there's a number of different perspectives that I'd like to learn more about, and whatever we, whatever we can do to insert ourselves into that process, to learn more, to help inform or influence, I think would be important right now. To the extent that there's that opportunity, I'm not even sure that opportunity exists.
I would just take it for what it's worth tonight as information.
Okay.
And obviously, I think our best track is to coordinate a collaborative meeting with the DNR, the watershed, and whatever other stakeholders that need to be at the table.
Are we, does this, are we headed down a who's responsible for what kind of path here? Is it, I'm hearing that a little bit as well?
Well, the watershed's responsible for the JD ditches.
Okay.
How do we preserve that responsibility? That's obviously going to be a question at the table.
Right, okay.
If things change, how does that affect the upland land that, you know, we're talking about?
Right. Kind of that, that Harrow County Road 50 area you mentioned?
Yeah, so if you go, you know, just so you, you see how it really affects, you can see how far the drain tile works its way up to that area.
Right.
And that wasn't small drain tile.
Right.
So if a subdivision were to pop up right there, south of County Road 50, on Harrow Avenue, you're going to have to drain to JD5. And if it can't go that way, you're going to have to get water up before it finds another way to go, right?
Right.
So then that would just take away developable land.
Right. Other questions of Ryan, or requests, more information, council would like?
Ditches are the only issue, really. I mean, as far as making a wildlife management area, it's a good place for it, but I can understand the issue with the, with the ditch, we've got to figure that out.
Right.
No doubt about it. And I concur that we need to meet with these folks.
Right.
I guess, Ryan, you mentioned reaching out to, so I think reaching out to both Rice Creek and then also Washington County and Commissioner Miron, and just, you know, making them aware we had this conversation, council is interested in certainly maintaining, you know, visibility as the conversation continues, and just see what, if we were able to participate in whatever meetings that happen, I think would be important.
Did you say the county was going to get back to us?
Yeah, they're settling on dates right now. And I think Thanksgiving holiday kind of put a little bit of a damper on that, so there was a, I just saw an email come through this afternoon, that they're just trying to recircle the wagons on that. But I believe that exact meeting right now is trying to get scheduled as we speak.
Do you want to contact county commissioner, or do you want, come for me?
It's already, the county's already, when I get the meeting, when they get it scheduled, I'll give everybody
Just giving them updates to know that we talked about it tonight?
Yep, yep, I will, absolutely.
Ryan, do you need anything else from us on this one?
Thanks.
Okay. Very good. Moving on, our next agenda item, Highway 97, 2024 improvement project discussion. Looking far into the future, but it'll be here before we know it, right?
Yeah. So Mayor, City Council, we previously met with MINDOT, so about a month ago, and they presented what they've been working and planning for Highway 97, which is most likely a 24 construction project year. There's a lot of things in moving, going on here. I did provide a handouts. So right now, what we'll first look at, look at on the table is a three-lane option. So what they're currently looking at and scoping, unless additional funding can be identified, and we'll, we'll go through that. But right now, they're looking at project limits, you know, just east of I-35, and then west of 61. Obviously, the two-lane road, we're experiencing traffic levels, annual daily traffic, almost well over 19,000 on the west end. And then as you get closer to the 61 side, you're almost pushing 16,000. So they're at their, their upper end of counts already of where, you know, obviously we're over capacity, and you see that on a daily basis and stuff like that. Thus, you know, there's been a lot of inquiries on private land development adjacent to 97, which kind of sparked our meeting, and, you know, kind of where MINDOT's going with this. And knowing this is the last section that needs to be improved, now that you got both intersections done on both sides. So what we have shown on the table right now, it's a full pavement replacement construction, no matter what we're looking at. It originally was looking at doing some pavement maintenance in a 23 project, but as their different groups in MINDOT started exploring the roadway, it was determined that a full reconstruction needs to occur. So thus, why a more robust look at things and getting potentially the city involved. So on the table, it's a three-lane section with both shoulders and turn lanes, so we would work with those. Obviously, we would have a local share at our local legs on this type of a project. And then it's obviously going to need a lot of soil corrections on their projects, so that's obviously going to have a direct effect on traffic control and staging, and how do we maintain traffic and stuff like that. With the three-lane road, where it says complete rural drainage replacement, that means it's not going to have curb and gutter. You'll still have the, you know, rural roadside, no curb, draining off into the ditches. Obviously, they'll need to do culvert and some storms to work to meet watershed rules and requirements. And then there was talk about ADA improvements being part of the project, and then they need to still further evaluate right-of-way costs, which, anything they do is going to have a right-of-way impact. Fortunate thing is areas along like Quick Trip, where that's been developed, the city's been proactive on obtaining enough right-of-way to allow for that. And then just east of there, you had the Falcon Avenue Minor Subdivision, the three homes there, and we consumed some additional land to the north there. City owns a lot of land along Fenway in that area in the airport, so, you know, there are some benefits there. And then anytime, you know, with the McCall project, that something's been proposed, we always talk about the offsets that would be needed, because of, obviously, the expansion of 97. I mean, this has been really talked about in studies all the way back to 2001. So it's like nothing new to who reads all the archives. But as it's developing to reality now with the traffic, you know, so that's what we're talking about tonight. So estimated costs, they've built today are 8.3. With 24 construction, they're looking at 10.4 million plus the right-of-way in their engineering. MINDOT's currently leading the project in the design on this, just like they did with North Shore Trail and 97, so that's a favorable thing for the city. But we will be involved with some local share. Other things that are ideal to be included with this project now are a separated bike and ped trail on the, they said north or south side, but after we talked with them, it was best aligned if it was on the south side, so that's what that drawing actually shows, because we have all our local connections with Fenway, that eventually we'll have a trail all the way down to Fenway. We got one at Everton now, and then we'd be able to have connectivity all the way through the Diverge and Diamond that have the pedestrian facilities, too, and then our Hardwood Creek Trail anchor on the east side. But that stuff's not currently funded, and that's where the opportunity for the city aligns with if we want to chase the regional solicitation funding. MINDOT no longer will do that on behalf of these projects, because they're, I guess, you're favoring one community if you're doing that, and that community not chasing regional funds in another. So if you need to fund those gap closures, that would be the city's responsibility to lead those applications. In this case, that would be able to fund the pedestrian facilities and our local legs. So it's obviously a direct benefit, but there are some costs that go into those, and it's a very robust process with the regional solicitation. So part of that stuff in what we're talking about tonight is really what involvement does the city want to have on the regional solicitation? Or if none, or any, you know, obviously it will be directed financially one way or another. We'll need to have proof of public engagement. That'll be very important, and it can't be just And it can't be just something in a newsletter or online survey. It, it really needs to be directed at particular groups that will be affected by the project. So like just holding a traditional town hall meeting and sending out a newsletter is considered bare minimum in their eyes, so. One thing that's changed about the regional solicitation this, this round, uh, it has a minimum of one million. And a maximum award of ten million, previously the max award was seven million, they have increased that up to ten million now. Here's, here's the one I, I've been waiting to say, the applicant must have completed an ADA transition plan prior to requesting funding.
Done.
That will knock a lot of people out of the game, believe it or not. A lot of people have not completed their ADA transition plans, so that's, that's good there. Obviously, we'll go through a lot of proposed layouts that MinDOT has for the submittal and, you know, public engagements. That'll have traffic analysis done. And that's kind of gonna play into the, the next concept I'll be talking about. Are, are we quite there with capacity? Is the risk there? You know, obviously it'll be there someday, but how would that score now on, on a need basis? So. We don't need a resolution at this time. We, obviously we go through all the traditional support letters, MinDOT, we'd want from them. School districts will play important, local businesses, you know, Columbus even, or even Scandia, the regional significance that we can build. Is gonna be very important on that as well. Uh, a staff approved layout, so whether it's this or the other option we'll talk about. That's worth twenty five percent of the points, so if you have in a staff approved layout, you get a hundred percent in that category. So that's major deal, uh, so we would need to have, you know, really that approved by April two thousand and twenty, so. Uh, status on right away is gonna have an impact on points received. You know, the favorable thing is right now, we got a large portion of it that's been either acquired already or some of it city land. But there are gonna be some other areas that are certainly takings and they would have to go through that process. Uh, and typically, you remember what MinDOT said for them, what that process is, that's, that's at least a year for MinDOT, so. It's a little different. You know, we already hit on the, the public involvements part of it and, uh, stuff like that. So the solicitation actually opens in February two thousand and twenty, but, you know, starting earlier, obviously with the public engagement and getting that stuff rolling and requests for. Letters of supports are only good and then applications enter due in April two thousand and twenty. And then you know the results in October of two thousand and twenty. So the other thing that we're gonna, we'll jump down there and look at this, what you got currently shown on the table is the three lane option. Which would basically have the designated turn lane in the middle. Uh, now, obviously, when you get close to intersections, it will account for, you know, designated turn lanes. There will be some traffic evaluations done by MinDOT at each of the intersections, maybe potentially, you know. What kind of goes on, some of the intersection control might change, I, I don't know that now until I go through those. Analysis, so potentially Fenway, per se, is a roundabout because of all your access issues on the north side. Cause you got a two lane road, road pretty much now, just think if you increase the width and you put a designated turn lane down the middle and you put bus shoulders and stuff on the sides. You got that much more pavement for a car to turn across and make judgment decisions. So there potentially sometimes there's that access closures one way or another that then we gotta look at other alternatives down, down the road. So the other option that MinDOT is looking at, um, on the west end and the capacities are there to support it. But, you know, as we get to the east, that's the risk you would take in an application based on the traffic. But ultimately, this is probably what would be built there at some point in time anyways. It will certainly help on traffic staging, cause you could build one side or another. This is your, your five lane divided highway concept, basically which would kind of resemble Frenchman Road through Hugo. So that's the other option, we'll show that on, on paper too. Uh, that would have to be an urban section, so that would have curb and gutter just like Frenchman Road. So you can picture what that looks like, that's kind of what would resemble here. I don't know if there's pedestrian facilities on both sides, there it makes sense, here it doesn't. We would still just retain the pedestrian trail on the, the south side. Obviously, environmental impacts are doubled in this area, so you go through, you know, both projects will have environmental. Project memorandum they'll have to go through, gets more extensive, obviously this size of a project. But constructibility, it's easier to do this, cause you can build it half and half and maintain two way traffic pretty, pretty easily, so. But the estimated costs are, the other risk of this is a twenty twenty four project is estimated at seventeen point three million. Plus right away, which would be greater and engineering are not included in that along with the trail as well, so. But that regional solicitation could close that gap that, uh, MinDOT's looking for. So that's what we're bringing for you tonight. I guess really the ultimate decision is whether you guys want to engage the city to lead the regional solicitation application, whether it's for a three lane or a five lane. Uh, I believe staff, correct me if I'm wrong, was more supportive of the five lane. Because ultimately that's what we're gonna need anyways and allow us for better traffic during construction. And it'll provide for a more defined corridor, so when developers come, how come I can't come here? How come I can't come here? Can I have access here? You know, like this is how it's laid out, you know? It would probably include a more in-depth evaluation of the intersections, you know? For sure, you would have, you know, you're gonna have a median now down the, the road. So if you think of some of those houses or those long dead end roads between Fenway and sixty one. How are they gonna get back into town? They would probably have to come turn outs, they'll be right in, right out. Only maybe we got some pork shops that allow that turn, kind of like you do at Super America for Broadway. If they can fit enough staging queuing area for them to slow down to get into that stuff. Or otherwise, you may be looking at a roundabout at Fenway, which then allow them to just turn and turn around, kind of do that stuff, so. So those are all the things that are kind of out there right now for discussion at the end of the night. It's, I think the city needs some direction on, one, are we gonna be leading a regional solicitation application? Two, are we gonna support the three lane or the five lane? That will show some figures here. So with that, I would just probably jump down from the map and let you guys get your eyes on what's here. So what's on the table right now is the three lane with the bike path on the south. And then after we have time to look at that, we'll put the five lane over the top of it. And the bike path might be on the other side, but that was printed before MinDOT had the time to go back and change that one to the south side, so.
Quick questions before we jump down? Is there any, any immediate questions?
Ryan, when you, when you say sources of regional funds, um, what does that come from? Who are we applying to? Who's the decision-making body there?
Well, there's, I don't know who actually grades this application, it's a combination of federal and state money.
Okay.
So.
And our competition in that is other, other?
Highway eight's gonna be a good candidate, uh, hopefully they're building in twenty three, so we're a programmed year behind them. That's their plan, Highway eight is, their goal is to have construction in twenty three.
Okay.
Which will take some competition away, certainly in the area, but you think of any other major corridors, you know? Highway ten in Anoka Ramsey, they're gonna be chasing this. They've already secured nearly seventy million, but they keep pushing westward and more interchanges and stuff like that. Highway fifty five is another good example where there's a lot of safety stuff going on, uh, Highway twelve. So it's stuff like that, that's a, it's a regional player in the transportation network that has major capacity and safety issues.
How about Highway ninety seven east or sixty one?
Your traffic levels aren't near what this is, so. But. City's leading the project at Goodview, right?
Right.
And then MinDOT's leading the project at North Shore. So when all this stuff's done, guess where MinDOT and the city get to focus?
Right.
Harrow Avenue.
Right, space.
All right, walk us through the map.
So. This is kind of what we're talking about, the three lane section, obviously with the intersections. And seeing where the designated turn lanes appear, but then down the middle where there's nothing currently, that's where it would just be striped like, you know, a wider median. Fake median, it wouldn't be great. Water, it would typically have a crown in the road and water would shoot to the side just like it does today. This pink thing color is the proposed trail and because it's a rural section, MinDOT clears on requirements and stuff like that. Pushed that trail significantly farther away from the roadway, which is a great thing, uh, but it does, you know, that affects some right away. Some of the right away stuff that they have on here is not quite accurate, you know, the city owns a pretty big corner here, you know, but. We don't, all this, you know, this is not built yet, so that's good. Obviously, too, with a project like this, you're gonna look really closely where the liabilities or the punch to and water to, especially since they're doing a reconstruction. We'll get half the cost than we normally would.
This is the time you can punch utilities across, you're still gonna punch utilities across nine seven or across ninety seven?
We gotta get up in here.
Right.
So we got water and then we stubbed out to here, but we have it down here. So we could get that all over here and then. There's no, there's sewer, there's sewer on everything, but not water anywhere. Other than this call Saturday, there's water. We got water on the south side of the road. Jay, how far is the water road? Southside, yeah. And then it goes that way. So that's good, you know, our stuff's right there, but this is kind of what we're looking at, so MinDOT can be timed. But you got, you know, the nice improvements on the east side and then you're gonna have the stuff shortly you're completed that's going on right now. But. This road being realigned to come into here, that's already pretty much done, you still got, it's like a workhorse and a lot of missing things. And then the stoplights will come, you know, they wore the project later and so typically. Eighteen weeks plus or minus three weeks, some ad actually arriving for job once ordered.
Can you talk about, maybe this is more of a conversation, but if you're talking about limiting access points? Where are the candidates to limit access points?
We'll see that on the next page, but.
And you wouldn't have a, you, there wouldn't be a recommendation to limit any access points, that's just the three lane.
That's nervous to me, so do they run the roundabout and then turn into the driveway?
Yeah, right.
You know, all these houses right here. You see what the KIMI does on I seven. Mostly the time though when MinDOT comes into, comes through and does a project like this, it has a lighting requirement. What product is the lighting agreement gonna be on? Running for North Shore? So even that one, they're putting a couple of lights in. Obviously, before this project was built, there was no lights, that came in. This doesn't have lights now, that'll have some lighting. So, you know, that stuff will help, you know, this is so hard at night. Interstate, I believe maybe just an internal policy that they're allowing the drivers to turn out that way. They're required to come out and turn around and go that way.
Makes sense.
So that's good. But like. This driveway, that drive, you know, these are obviously long dead end roads, they wanna continue to go that way. You got it all set up, but you still got more pavement out across. It's kind of like Harrow Avenue back here, you got it right now. Obviously, we're fifty five through here, but after MinDOT does a. Project, they typically go through and do their own speed study anyways to see if things have changed and what's set it. If it lowered, it lowered, it can't go, they won't go higher than fifty five most likely. So part of the regional solicitation too, even though we don't have trailer today, we would build that into that program, right? Finish that linkage. And we get it up to the Disney Trail, we already have our trail down here, which takes us all the way through all those things. Then you would actually have a real major loop in the city itself, a couple Everton, to Fenway, to the Hardwood Trail, some of those parkways. They haven't included that in cost, but that's something that obviously is gonna, would wanna be explored by all parties involved, so. But that would be something else, that would play well into the regional solicitation, cause you have a regional connection. So this is just more generic, because they looked at it, what if it was like this, you know? The things that note, obviously the trail is shown on the north side, but after we met, we all decided anything, trailers are gonna stop side because of our local connections. And then the median, you can see how it would be built through intersections and through all these driveways. So having, you're looking at intersection control change here, which might be a roundabout where they can drive and turn around, just like they can here. We even talked about having median, maybe even extend through there because of the turning limits, all that. But this is something that really would resemble the Frenchman Road way if they wanted to know that.
And think about as, as Lila Headwaters, as that student group, you know, shifts over and as that becomes fully populated. This is gonna be like the new eleven sixty one, you know, is what we, and then even worse, cause you've got high school teen drivers, yeah.
So here's another area, neighborhood that would be affected probably by the construction. Whether you, you provide all those support shops like the U of S Super America, that they allow just a regular turn lane. Uh, but if they gotta get out, they can all come back to signalize intersection.
Would they consider closing that?
Well, not closing the road, but. So here, the regional solicitation would make up the cost difference between three lane and this five lane. The local share connections and trail and then obviously this probably have to come back a little farther. Just to have more space.
How tall is the curb median throughout there?
MinDOT likes to use a four inch. Maybe in the median, they would go to higher than six inch. Now, I've done projects before where we had medians and we need to retain emergency access, so we act a curb down, but it's all blended in. As a driver, you, you very hard to see it, to notice it, but as a EMS responder, you guys would know where to turn. So like getting Brighton on. What's the road that goes from six ninety four on through by Old Champs there, a lot of times they're off the. Is that colored median through there? There's a lot of areas where the curve isn't specifically. There's a lot of areas where the curve isn't specifically mapped down. So, yes, so EMS could cut that, especially if you got up to six ninety four and had to turn the four, four area right there in the front door. So there's stuff like that, but it always covered it in the stuff. This certainly would provide a, a much safer corridor, easier construction, big price day.
Are we, um, is our application for regional funds stronger with a bigger project? Or is that the more negative because it's same as you were just trying to get bigger project?
Well, it's all gonna be based back to needs and, you know, we're gonna really have to have to stretch some of our accounting numbers. With MINDOT, you know, they use some different forecasting number. Good, the more capacity that you show it, you need, that'll play to it, right?
If they say though that in Washington County, with the traffic comes, Washington County, would you say they needed a, a five inch like this?
So let's, so Washington County would.
Like they have those, if they have that, those kind of traffic comes, they would put this type of road in for MINDOT, that's a little bit. Their numbers, they'd be quite a little more traffic, but like they said, this is a Washington County road, this is what they put in because of the cars.
Considering potential for development this direction, right? Remembering that, I mean, we're down in season, increased traffic, some significant increase traffic potentially here. Here and increase development to these two, which, yes, that, yeah.
So with the diversion diamond that's being built, it allows more traffic to flow this way. Your restriction is the roadway.
So how much safety comments, move that, is available?
I like divided. Yep, it's, it's a much, uh, safer way to move traffic. To, and on to Ryan's comments, with horns being to the south, they've already started building, uh, large infrastructure, large building. And, or being known county for Columbus. And then we get to the west side of the track that will be apartment buildings into Columbus, which ninety seven would be your, your median road in four cycle. So we're gonna have increased traffic.
So just recent conversations the city's had. And its potential developments of this parcel in the year, that's been by a couple applicants. This has recently been built out and that sort of retained some additional land. This is come, come and gone, I think if this was in, this instantly gets built because who wouldn't want to be there now? I always wonder what's gonna happen here. And then I think that makes this man pop faster. So this is what staffs and conversations with MINDOT about.
What would you recommend for a couple of engagement to show that we're, we have a minimum, we're, and we engaged?
Well, we need to, for sure, have an open house to start things out, we can start adding some community feedback and then follow up on that feedback. And then even specific property owner meetings and then what we should be engaging, maybe the city of Columbus, city of Scandinavia, the school district. It would be good to the counties involved, you know, you bring Marsha in. Chamber of Commerce would be another good one. Kristin.
I was, I was, I was separate, separate love from the E D A.
Obviously, a big thing would be with crash data, you know, there's a lot of tools out there that we can have some hands on, but. Give us more local stuff that's not always put into those databases, you know, so we could always work with you guys in the past.
And when did you say that that was due, who have you found your name in?
April, and results are known in October. So with that, you have to be all in on one day. Okay, there's no playing the fast game. Because if MINDOT is gonna sit tight and hold up on us being successful on a five lane. You know, they're gonna continue to develop the other stuff to some points, but if all of a sudden we direct our energies to this and then we say, eh, let's just, we don't. We want to go back to three lane, then we can't do that, you know? We don't need to make a hundred percent decision tonight, but for sure your first council meeting in January, you should have it without doubt, don't you?
I just think, when you consider everything that's going on in this area, you know, um, around the Columbus area, potential developments south. The other development areas you're talking about, I mean, I'm leaning five and hearing from.
But you guys are too, just right now talking vocal of all the stuff that's coming, but there's stuff way west on the quarter that drives through the city, just to be sure. So our regional significance touches all the way back to the obstacle.
Right.
How many people from there do you even drive through here?
Right, yeah. Exact, I mean, they didn't touch on that, I'm just saying, we don't wanna, we don't wanna underbuild this, you know? What does that do though for, what does that do in the road? So if we were to go three versus five, what does that mean for, I mean, you've still got a long list of other, you know, areas where we've got local share. So, London Avenue.
Well, the one after the, the only way you're gonna fund this is the regional solicitation. And we would build a local cost within into that.
But, and so building in our, so does that increase our, how much does that take away from our available funds for those other projects?
Ideal would be to get our local share infrastructure fund to be that solicitation.
So then why would we go for five?
I think it's everywhere.
Especially for safety. What, what could say much, or at least for safety? Well, it seems to make sense to build one with safety, so then it's just a matter of building the strong enough application with.
General losses. I think safety in the future, yeah, but thinking ahead, not just a couple of years, but thinking, you know, ten or so.
I'm surprised, I'm surprised you didn't add some already adding. Five lane progress, because it just.
MINDOT is very hesitant right now to fund projects that add capacity stuff. Cause I mean, that's, they really kind of followed us on the run though. Where we wanted the hybrid, the two lanes coming in, two lanes coming out.
Yep.
And we're kind of where we're at.
Why, I mean, but if you look at, if you look at, if you look at our growth projections.
They don't have the money, they don't have the money. So think about all the stuff they have to maintain that they're sold way behind that. Anything that they've had expansion, this has significance outside funding. All the highway ten stuff that's coming down the pipeline? That's, that's some, some of what they've done there is all followed, so. Our transportation group has led a lot of that. MINDOT, we're not chasing that, so we're doing that on behalf of the city of Anoka. Otherwise, it would not, what was in the worst is in the worst.
Yeah, I, future created as much as I can and I'm sure three lane is not doing that. So they redo it, when was the last time this was redelated? Is it a twenty year?
Well, the original concrete, I mean, this is about twenty feet wide and that was built. And they did some stuff to the top of that, but we know all that stuff, twenty feet wide, so.
It's like.
When the road curves, when the road curves like that and we built the turn lane at Fenway and Everton?
Yeah.
We had spots where we kicked that concrete and had to move over. And then the bison, there's bison was laid a top with it. So it's, they just kept adding and adding to it, so. That would all be torn out.
So it would be torn out from.
I do think also, I, I get, nobody loves a, a construction project. I do think that we're gonna have to, um, you know, the, the comments around which is the easier construction phase. I think we're gonna have to try to push beyond what's the easier construction. Even though five lane is the easier construction, I just don't want us to make a decision that it's gonna be a forty year road, if that's a forty year road. Based on, you know, eighteen months of construction being at that.
You just give a suggestion, I wish you can get back to MINDOT tomorrow.
Five lane?
So I kind of let you guys talk, this was a no brainer for staff. We were all on board with the five lane because. With the three lane, you would deal with it now, all of a sudden, it continues to pop, do you deal with it in ten years again? Ultimately, we build a footprint now with today's permits. Who knows what the permanent permits will be like in ten, twenty years? So our footprint's always gonna be there now. It allows us to get infrastructure across the stuff and, and where we need to. And then, you know, the constructability thing is a big thing because the amount of traffic, you got school bus traffic that goes through here. Shared EMS services, so to just shut it off, politically it would not win.
So are the homeowners in this area, for the public engagement?
They, yes.
Yeah, and this, this group of.
You probably hold, you probably hold this, these guys separately, because you know what, I'm done getting mad at these guys, maybe these are separates and then these are just.
Although these, I think have already all even held about certain concerns and there's, and obviously they're gonna have different concerns about it being bigger, but certainly, um, improve turn and there's some things that.
And if there's a willing seller, maybe that's a time that somebody's removed because that's obviously an area for sale. Cause you're not gonna be able to really build much in here without significant tree, tree clearing, but I think that keeping the trees is good. You got some stuff in here, you can bring the drainage to it. And then all this comes down to right there. So the, you know, one positive thing environmentally, obviously, is none of this area has any treatment, someone on treatment today. It's just correct runoff right into the wetlands.
Yep, and we're right in the lake.
And practices on roadways are much different on state highway than in our local roadway where data is very conscious about salt and stuff like that. MINDOT will salt this to get it, drive as fast as they can. So now you got treatment built into a project that will only enhance the label of time.
That's also a great message, but the crowd is gonna say, so, so just, that's the general, come on. Yeah, lovely. I've seen it for a while. All right, nice. Thank you.
Anybody know how these Vikings are doing? Anybody know how the Vikings are doing? Yeah, I don't know. All right, next item is our new number six. Patrick, you want to just give us a quick update on Castlewood?
Sure, um, as most of you know, we have a contract for an operator to run Castlewood Golf Course. That he runs the maintenance side of it, keeps the greens, the fairways and everything else. Also does the starting and the tournaments and everything that's associated, leagues and everything is associated with the golf course. Uh, we have been in negotiations with the vendor for at least six months to try to, um, have him renew his contract. There were some, a number of concerns on his part that, uh, he was, the current contract and the proposed contracts would not leave him in a position to be able to properly reimburse him or fund him for, for his business. Remember the last meeting, we talked about a twenty five thousand dollar, uh, fund that would help, uh, maintenance and, and associated costs and that we would institute a, uh, increase in, in fees for, for weekends and for weekdays. We thought we had the agreement pretty well knocked down at that point. Uh, we found out late last week and that whatever terms we came up, the terms that we came up were not acceptable, that he didn't believe he could uh, make enough of a profit and have enough time with his family and things like that to, to operate the golf course. Um, one of the initial requests from him was to be a member of the staff with benefits and, and insurance and things like that. We, we felt we couldn't go that way at this point. So we continue to work with him today, uh, and just this afternoon, we got a, a final email that says basically he can't, he won't, can't do the golf course next year. There's just no way he can do it. So what does that do? Well, right now, he, since he owns the, he runs the golf course, it's all his equipment, it's all his people that run it, it maintain, the golf course greatly maintained. So the question is, what do we do next? Uh, what I would recommend is that we put together an RFP as quick as we can, send it out to interested parties. Uh, there are private companies that run golf courses on a regular basis. Uh, send it out to local golf courses as well, maybe they can make that an extension of their current operations and on that. And see what kind of a response we get. We will try to get something like that done, at least written by the end of the week and put out on the street Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week. We just don't have time to wait, uh, because we have a lot of outstanding issues that, you know, you have to prepare for when the golfing season, and that's, you know, that we have a membership process, we have leagues and tournaments that like to schedule and things like that. So we'll do that as quick as possible with our hope of being able to find a, a vendor that will, um, take over the operation of this course. Now, one of the problems with that is that, that the current vendor owns all the equipment, so, and we don't have a big restaurant or clubhouse or anything like that. Those traditional things that make profits for golf courses. Uh, so it may be, it may not be an attractive one, or it may be, we just don't know yet. So if we do not find somebody that's suitable, we will have to scramble and scramble quickly. Uh, and we will come up with some other considerations of that. One of the things that I'm recommending is that you, when we talk about the budget, that, um, we gave you a new number today, but now that number changed after, we wanted to change again with this afternoon. Uh, just in case we do have to scramble, I would like, uh, the council to add back twenty thousand dollars in contingency funds, just in case we have to scramble. And that position that looks like it's being, going to be approved, the recreation communications person may have to be diverted at least for the next year to help run a golf course. Um, that would add twenty thousand dollars to, to the proposed budget and bring that percentage increase up to five point seven four percent. So, that's what we're asking, um, hopefully we won't have to go that way, but I, I don't want to identify that twenty thousand in a salary line item. I just want to leave it on the side if we have to use it, if we don't, we won't, but I'd rather be prepared. We will know better, hopefully, before the end of December, first of January, we're going to be. If, if we have to do something different than a contractor, we will get Jamie, myself, Dave and whoever else is available to figure out how we're gonna do this. I'm hoping that doesn't happen, uh, but if it does, we will, so. Running golf courses are fairly straightforward, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. You know, you, you, the maintenance is important, but then also your leagues and your tee times and your reservations and your carts and things like that. and your reservations and your carts and things like that. So I'll have to go back to the days when I was a caddy to, to remember all this kind of stuff, but I think we can get there. So hopefully not though. So that's, that's the golf course. It's, it's, we worked, Jamie's worked very hard to try to put this to bed, but it just doesn't seem to be in the cards this year. So we will start in a different direction starting tomorrow morning. So questions?
Questions, comments?
I just, I wish we, well, first of all, I wish the gentleman we contract with could potentially be a little patient with us, you know, as we grow our perks and, you know, maybe have additional opportunity down the road. I, I think we are going to be really hard pressed to find somebody that can do the job he can do. So, but we'll wait and see, just wait and see. So it's just unfortunate, I think, for us.
Yeah, the RFP will tell the story, won't it?
So feedback on current operations has been terrific. If there is still an opportunity to bridge that gap, you know, I think we keep that door open and certainly we have a golf course that needs to be open in the spring, so whatever we need to do to RFP and keep the process moving is good, but I, I think also keeping the door open and over, throughout that RFP process, we don't know what we're going to find.
What, what's kind of the deadline on getting this done properly?
Well, we, you know, January, February at the latest because you have to, again, you have to sign up. People start signing up for tournaments and they start signing up for their memberships and they start, and all leagues, if there are leagues, and I'm sure there are. So that all is now in flux. I mean, I usually, at this time of year, he's, or maybe he has already sent out information about next year. So the faster we do this, the better off we're going to be. Again, if we get a contractor, that would be good, that'd be better, they can do all that, they can hopefully plug away at it. If it's something we have to face internally and make some accommodations, we may be a little more struggling, but, you know, we'll get it done. It'll be obviously a change in priorities for the, for the city as a whole and for Jamie, but yeah, January, February at the latest, early February at the latest.
And I would encourage as early in January as possible.
Absolutely.
Because we're going to, you're going to, you know, you have a lot of individuals who have made decisions about leagues and, and those sorts of things by early, and if they don't see that they have an option here, they may move on.
Yeah.
So.
Well, one of the things we'll be requesting tomorrow is all documentation, all league rosters, all anything that we have that has been used at the golf courses just under our current contract so that we don't lose that information in any transition.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not a golfer, but I certainly think that the golf course is an asset to the city and, and it's green space and all kinds of good things and, and so I hope we can re, get it resolved.
Hope so too.
And get it going for those folks, so.
And I guess, and I guess I would just encourage us in that analysis, you know, as Mayor Bann said, if, if we start doing that evaluation and we recognize, you know, that we may need to be able to work a little harder to sustain the existing program that we have, you know, maybe that would be an avenue to explore as well.
Yeah, we will not close that door until we close the door permanently and that would be when we know what the analysis tells us.
Yep.
Yeah, especially with the equipment and the, those things don't come cheaply, that's for sure.
So, I mean, I'd certainly be in favor of adding that $20,000 contingency thing to get this thing straightened out.
Yeah.
That'd be where my vote would be, so one vote.
Okay.
And that takes us to 5.74 over the.
Approximately, yeah.
We also had scheduled on the agenda this evening, our last item, the 2020 budget review. Patrick, you made a few updates. Patrick, Sandy, you want to walk us through?
Just very quickly, and I'll leave it to Sandy after this, is in front of you is the proposed tax, 2020 tax levy. Now will be modified just a bit. This incorporates all the changes you saw at the last meeting. All the numbers, the budget in back of that includes all of the changes in numbers and we should be ready to go unless there is any additional changes besides the $20,000. We believe that it's a fair budget, it raises the levy by 5.74% with the change. I will point out though particularly that the general fund is only 2.9% of that increase. That is the, that's the major operating increase for the city. That's a fairly, that's a real fair number, probably actually maybe a little low sometimes. The major, the major increases in, in the tax levy have to do with some of the new issues that we've taken on with the paving and the refinancing, et cetera. I think those are important issues. That is a first step towards, towards getting on some kind of a stable ground with our infrastructure. That's where the majority of this increase is going to be, not in the day to day operations of the city.
Any questions for Patrick or Sandy on the 2020 budget?
Other than, there still has to be bond project budgets that have to be included with this, it's just a revenue expense neutral, just to let you know.
Yes, we'll, and this will be obviously ready for next Monday's truth and taxation hearing and request that you pass the levy and the budget for 2020.
Amanda for council, that truth and taxation hearing is at 6:30 on Monday evening and then we have a regular council meeting at seven o'clock.
That's kind of a tight schedule. I guess we've got to do it though. We'll get her done.
Got to do it.
Well, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank Administrator Casey and the city and, you know, we've, I think we've landed in a really good place here. I think it's a really fair place, you know, for a community and we're getting some things accomplished, you know, that we've been neglecting for a very long time. So thanks to city staff for working so hard on this and working with us and, you know, getting it to a, a place I think we can all be comfortable with.
Anything else this evening? And not seeing or hearing any, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
A second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose and we're adjourned.